We're going to call this meeting to order July twenty second, two thousand twenty five. Roll call, please.
Mayor Palmer.
Here.
Counsel President Beachide. Uh, Council Joe Bergren.
Yeah.
Counselor Sandra Bergen.
Yeah.
Counselor Frazier.
Yeah.
Counselor Martin.
Yeah.
And Counselor Stan Cliff is excused.
All right, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there any agenda adjustments, Lily?
I don't believe so.
Announcements, awards, and proclamations.
I do want to give an announcement that Rogue Valley Sewer Service is holding a public meeting here in the city council chambers on the thirtieth of July, which is, I believe, next Wednesday, a week from tomorrow at six P M. As many of our citizens as we possibly can get to come, we would want to be here. Uh, the federal agencies are wanting to hear feedback on, uh, the proposed rate increases for sewer. And, um, they're significant, but it's necessary. Uh, they're trying to find a way to fund the pipeline extension, and so this is them going to have a public meeting about the pipeline project, the cost of the project and everything else. And they're looking to get public feedback during that time. So I just want to make sure that, uh, uh, we let as many people know. I've posted it on Facebook. Uh, physically, we posted it in our three locations, plus City Hall and on the website. So, uh, we have partnered with RVSS to try to get the word out the best that we can. And, um, wanted to make sure that you guys are all aware tonight as well.
Can I ask a related question?
I might not have an answer, but yes.
I know you don't. Um, where are the three locations now?
The places we post, we post on the front window here at City Hall. We post on the community board at the deli. We pay post at the laundromat, uh, across from the gas station. The market. And a raise. So raise, the laundromat, the market, deli, and on the window at City Hall, and then on our website.
Any other questions? All right, number four, public comments. Do you have anybody?
I, I didn't grab the list. Did any of you sign up? All right, we're good, sir.
Counsel, uh, consideration. So, uh, we have a ordinance twenty-five dash zero five that dash G M's, G eights, M C, Title sixteen and seventeen amendments.
All right, so I'm going to bring, uh, ordinance twenty-five dash zero five. I am going to ask, uh, after we do this to have a friendly amendment, um, but the first. Do we do it before or afterwards? We're going to have you do a presentation, right? So I think the easiest thing would be for us to, um, give a presentation on the ordinance and Dick Converse from Rogue Valley Council of Government is here to give that presentation. I will, uh, have before you the, um, uh, the packet as well, uh, that you have it in front of you. And, um, I will say that I'm going to acknowledge in the amendments I'm asking for is that in the very title, uh, it should say, "An Ordinance of the City of Gold Hill Adopting Amendments to Title sixteen and seventeen" of the Gold Hill Municipal Code. I accidentally typed sixteen and sixteen. Uh, apparently I was sixteen going on seventeen, it didn't get there. But no, I'm just kidding. Uh, so that is one friendly amendment we'll ask, but, uh, I'm going to turn it over uh, to Mr. Converse to give a presentation on this ordinance.
Okay, thank you. Um, as she noted in the email that transmitted the document, it's huge, like eighty-seven pages. Well, I want to ease your minds that we're looking at about four issues in this entire document. Part of the reason that it's so large is that one of the things that the city is wanting to do is to incorporate. I thought I was doing well. Sorry about that.
Okay.
Um, that the city wants to make sure that ordinances have been, that have been adopted in the past are all in one municipal code. So many of those pages are simply bringing, uh, primarily the erosion and sediment control ordinance into the document. So even though it's a lot of pages, there's not a lot that we really need to concentrate on. Uh, what I was tasked with coming back to the second retirement and, uh, rehire with the Council of Governments was to help them implement a House Bill, it's called thirty-three ninety-five. And the primary purpose of that is to assist statewide in housing productivity. It, we are falling way behind annually. And what they're looking at are measures to increase the, um, opportunity to provide housing. Most of the requirements are in cities, or, well, yeah, the largest number of requirements apply to cities over twenty-five thousand. But there are some that apply to the smaller towns as well. And basically, it's just two that we're looking at in, uh, Gold Hill, based on its size. One of them is providing an opportunity for affordable housing mixed with resident, or with commercial uses. However, the way it's written, it says in zones that allow commercial and not industrial. So your downtown zone has a little bit of a manufacturing component. Usually it's where somebody will be putting or building furniture in the back room and selling it in the front room, but that's manufacturing. So I asked a group that I'm involved with, it's a, um, a monthly check-in just to see how we're going with the, implementation of the state rules. I asked that question, what does it mean? And they said, well, check, go ahead and check with the state agency. And they did confirm that if the zone does allow industrial use, the city is not obligated to include this affordable housing component. It's a relatively tough test to meet anyway. But it would apply to your down, or your, uh, general commercial zone, because that does not have that manufacturing component in it. So we have inserted that. Um, the other one is single-room occupancy, and I have to admit, I didn't have a clue what that was. Uh, it sounded like a boarding house, and in many ways it was, but we also asked that same question of the state. And they say, we're not giving legal advice, but this is how we understand it. What it, because I was thinking, if you've got as many as fifteen units, it says a shared bathroom facility and shared kitchen facility. Does that mean one for regardless of the number of lockable rooms we have? And they said, no. What it means is that each unit could have a bathroom or a kitchen, but it can't have both, because then that would meet a definition of an apartment. So that's what they're really focusing here is one of those. So you can have shared units, but it sounds to me like you could have as few as two units sharing a bathroom. I cannot imagine sharing fifteen units with one bathroom. Um, I actually stayed at a, a dorm in London when I was traveling with my niece, and I thought, oh, it's nice for a few days, but I wouldn't want that as to happen. So I, that gave me some comfort, that it's, it has some flexibility to it. How often it will be used, we don't know, but is, is actually required that cities, um, include that as an opportunity for housing in areas where a single-family zoning is allowed. So in essence, it would look like a relatively large home, uh, but it would be shared facilities. In, in a single-family zone, basically, it's up to five units. In, when you're dealing with a multifamily zone, it can have the number of units that that multifamily zone would allow. So that's, those are the two big changes that are coming about as part of this. Um, and those are the ones that relate to the House Bill. The other issue that we were encountering was, uh, food vendors. The way that ordinance was adopted, it basically made anybody who was working at a festival, uh, have to go through the hearings process to get an approval for a food vendor, and that was really not the intent. There is a need for a business license just for any type of activity occurring within the city, but the effect of this is to move, to remove the temporary vendor from the code. It, in one sense, it's still a temporary vendor, if somebody pulls a unit onto a property and is there for weeks at a time, because often they'll either take it at home or it's still by definition a temporary use. But this is to make sure that if we're dealing with the festival, they're not having to have a six-week review period to have a three-week or three-day approval. So that is also modified in there. Um, the only other thing was that in reviewing the codes, I noticed that there's no provision for a property line adjustment in the subdivision ordinance. And that's a typical thing where somebody wants to move a property a few feet, there's an opportunity to do that. So we, I think we borrowed from Phoenix and just pulled their language in to do that. So those are really the main things that we're looking at in the proposal that we bring before you. I think, oh, the, one other issue that did come up, one of the, the counselor, the commissioner said the erosion and sediment control plan actually reduced lot coverage. The percentage of a lot that could be covered with structures. That is incompatible with the new housing rules, because as you have additional units on a property, you're going to need a little bit more space. So the planning commission recommended that that change not occur. So the way it is looking in, in the code itself, it has, I think, the way it was, which was whatever the percent was, and then it has it crossed out, and then it has a second, or the third column is what is actually intended, eventually basically reverting to the original, uh, ordinance. And within that, there is a, an opportunity for incentives to increase that. But we didn't want to reduce the, the amount that we had before. So that's the change that came about as a result of the, uh, planning commission review, and their recommendation included that change.
Here's a, here's an example of that. So the maximum lot coverage, how much of a percentage of a lot would be able to be developed, uh, our code used to before the erosion control ordinance that was passed. So that meant it was law, it was passed. It just didn't make it into the municipal code for people to see it. It didn't get codified. Uh, so the blue number is what that ordinance that passed back in two thousand thirteen was. Uh, and the planning commission recommendation was to go back to the number it was before that ordinance passed. So that's why you see the black, where originally was that didn't get changed when the ordinance passed in two thousand thirteen. The blue is the two thousand thirteen ordinance. The red is the recommendation, uh, the planning commission made back to you as a council to return it to the original number, so more of the property can be, uh, developed.
And you have the draft ordinance that gives the history of how we've gotten here, talks about the, uh, planning commission review and their unanimous recommendation of approval of those changes. Questions?
Well, I know that there was, um, some discussion on social media about lot line adjustments and people thinking that the city could adjust lot lines. There's absolutely no way. So make clear to anybody that's watching.
The city does not have the authority without going through a process.
Right.
To adjust your lot lines.
There's an application process for it. The part that was bothering me is, you know, there was no way the city technically could do it, because it was, what we're finding is that it seems like certain things have been removed from the code, and we don't know quite why. I was just dealing with a marijuana issue, uh, last week, and I, I keep a log, a journal, and I was actually able to find, no, there was a hearing that date. Well, we've not have had a hearing on Breeze Botanicals if the code wasn't permitting it. And I remember going through the process of modifying the code, but now we can't find it. So some things we're still looking for will be basically Scrivener error, uh, returns to where they should be. But the property line adjustment was a similar circumstance. I know that I approved some adjustments when I was here.
We had talked about that, um, in a previous code amendment earlier this year, where we found chunks that never got talked about in planning commission or the council were inadvertently taken out when they amended in two thousand twenty-three. And we had brought that back in that process, and we found some here too, but, um, we had a, there's a dispensary here in town that, uh, changed hands in ownership, and they had a permit they requested. Uh, but the county was asking for the change of use process that would have happened when it went from church property to, uh, the Breeze shop that had been there. And there wasn't, there was no record of that. And so instead of, we were trying to find that documentation, what I asked Mr. Converse to do was to give me a letter to his recollection of what happened, and I would place that in the file, because he remembers the hearing. The hearing would have been specific, and everybody was watching what they were doing, because it was the first. And because of that meticulous oversight, um, and basically his testimony, no, it did happen, I authorized their permit to go through to the county that they wouldn't have to go through the process again. And, um, so, um, but we are, the documentation of this city has been very interesting. Let's just put it that way.
I was telling you earlier, my grandmother kept a diary. That's how we got to know her, because she was disabled by the time we came. And I've kept a log since nineteen seventy-seven. And with Bree saying, uh, in her website from Ashland, we began in two thousand fourteen. I was able to go back to my two thousand fourteen journal, and, uh, I found both a, me, a basically a workshop, and then I used the word hearing when it was approved. I said, with the surprising lack of controversy. Uh, but at least it was neat to have that, where, because I have no memory, I have to commit it to writing. It's good to have that. But again, all that to say, that's why we're reinserting the property line adjustment in this, because it, everybody has it. But it is a city process for approval.
And the legal processes alone is very spending.
Yes.
Yeah. I know, I just.
We have lots of surveys and everything else.
Yeah.
And unfortunately, much of, uh, this town, the survey lines and the perceived lines are offset.
Like perceived lines.
Sorry about that.
Last time that the old records nineteen ten. My property was.
Wow.
So you can't find pins, so I had.
If it makes you feel any better, my house in Grants Pass is nineteen oh nine, so same difference. You're like, but it was built in fifty-one, and that's not what that says.
Exactly.
Well, um, so for the technicality of the, uh, change of the title with me having that typo, um, do we need an amendment? Do we acknowledge that it was a typo?
I think we acknowledged it was a typo. The original notice that went out on this
Had the right.
Was the sixteen and seventeen.
It was, and the, and the agenda had it correctly.
I think we're fine with it.
Um, okay, so before you, I do have the, um, corrected ordinance. And just that, oh, no, this is the wrong one. This is, this one says sixteen and sixteen, so I'm gonna.
One of the packets says sixteen and seventeen.
Yeah.
No, that's the one I reprinted that was correct. The one that's in the stapled packet is, so. Yeah, I, uh, so before you now is the, uh, corrected one that I put in front of you, but, um, based on the course of action, this was posted to the public and to the council at least seven days in advance of the hearing, so that makes us eligible that you can have, uh, the ordinance be read by title only. Um, and also that both the first and second readings could happen tonight per our charter, if the council so chooses. Um, so normally, uh, the process of an ordinance passing is that you would read the ordinance for a first reading, and then you read the ordinance at a second reading. But those have to happen different nights unless it's at least seven days in advance that it was made available. And based on the vote of the council to do that. So, and then after the second reading, then there would be a motion to adopt the ordinance. And so, uh, and with the first and second reading, there are the options to do the first and or second reading by title only, if the council chooses. Otherwise, I'm going to be reading a while.
I found another Scrivener error.
Oh, okay. On page thirty, where it talks about medium-density residential districts. Um, on page thirty, if we go down to number six, it references that the application should be made to the Public Works Department, and throughout the rest of the packet, it, it directs people to, uh, apply with the City Hall instead of the Public Works Department.
That is from the, uh, ordinance thirteen oh two, and we didn't change that.
I would say that's what the language was in the city then, but, um, in the technicality, if somebody were to apply to the Public Works Department, they're still coming to City Hall to do it, because we don't have any departments.
You're just seeing it listed as two different places. Most of the time it says City Hall, but this particular time it says Public Works.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, a motion could be made to amend that, to just say City Hall. Uh, but Public Works falls under our purview, so there's, but you're right. There are other cities that this language is such that you would physically go to a different building in a different part of town for Public Works than you would for the planning or the building department. So I think for clarity, I have no problem with that being, uh, amended to keep things clear for the public. Um, but, um, do they have to do the first reading first, or do they ask for them then first?
I don't know the technicalities of that.
There was nobody that kind of heard public testimony, yeah.
That's a good, I'm not a legal guy. It almost feels like they should be read twice the same way, but.
Okay, so my recommendation would be to, and, and what I do know is it's a minor enough amendment that between the first and the second reading, you wouldn't have to read the whole thing so long as we read that amendment into the document. So, um, asking that, I mean, if that's what you would say is that, uh, it's the packet page thirty, it's not the, um, let me help you with some language of what it would be. So it would be.
Are you, are you looking at item six on page thirty? Yeah, where it says manufacturer home shell.
So it'd be chapter seventeen dash twenty, A six. So the reference of the amendment would be, uh, chapter seventeen dot twenty, uh, dot one-ten, A six. So that's how you'd say that, seventeen dot twenty dot one-ten, A six. If you want to make a motion to amend that to say City Hall.
Oh, okay.
My comment is to be consistent with what the House bill is asking us to do, is reduce confusion wherever we can. And that's one of the ways of doing it.
So do we need to make a motion right, right now?
Sure.
Okay, so I'll make a mo, or, let's see. And it just went out of my brain. I'd like to make a motion to cha, make a change in seventeen dot two, dot one-ten, A six. To change the verbiage from Public Works to the City of Gold Hill. The City Ca, City Hall.
Could I ask you to redo the motion?
Yeah.
Uh, and, and instead of dot two, just say twenty?
Twenty?
Yeah, and instead of the City of Gold Hill, just say City Hall.
Or re, oh.
Okay.
Pull back by a portion. Motion. Uh, second, or, I'll make a motion to change the verbiage from Public Works to City Hall in section seventeen, uh, twenty, uh, one-ten, A six.
Perfect.
No, City Hall.
I know, I know, I know, but.
I'll, I'll change it to Public Works Department.
Okay.
The City Hall.
I second.
Any other questions? Roll call.
Counselor Joe.
Yes.
Counselor Jerry.
Yes.
Counselor Rick.
Yes.
Counselor Sandy.
Yes.
Counselor Malia.
Yes.
Motion passes. Uh, okay, so then as amended, um, so then if you make a motion for the first reading by title only, as amended. Does that make sense?
Yeah, so how, somebody needs to make a motion to.
Read ordinance twenty-five dash zero five by title only, uh, let's see. It would be to make a motion to read ordinance twenty-five dash zero five as amended, first reading by title only.
Uh, I make a motion to, I'm sorry, I can't.
Ye.
I'll make a motion to read resolution number twenty-five R dash forty.
No, 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 hold on.
Yeah.
Or an ordinance. Let me read it, and somebody just say some, so moved, okay?
I was waiting for that.
A motion to, um, I'm, now you got me. A motion for ordinance twenty-five dash zero five as amended for first reading by title only.
So moved.
Okay. Second, okay. You're calling who?
I don't even know why I'm here. Do I need a roll call? There we go.
Okay. Counselor Joe.
Yes.
Counselor Jerry.
Yes.
Counselor Rick.
Yes.
Counselor Malia.
Yes.
And Counselor Sandy.
Yes.
Ordinance number twenty-five dash zero five is an ordinance of the City of Gold Hill adopting amendments to Title sixteen and seventeen of the Gold Hill Municipal Code.
So are we moving on to resolution twenty-five dash R?
Nope, so now we need a second reading motion. So.
Again.
A motion to read ordinance twenty-five dash zero five as amended for the second reading by title only. So move.
Roll call.
Yeah, I don't have a second. Okay, there we go. All right, so I went to first name since we have duplicate and last names. I hope that's okay. I don't mean any disrespect by it. All right, so Counselor Joe.
Yes.
Counselor Jerry.
Yes.
Counselor Rick.
Yes.
Counselor Sandy.
Yes.
Counselor Malia.
Yes.
Motion carries. So now it would be a motion to adopt ordinance twenty-five dash zero five as amended.
I make a motion to adopt ordinance number twenty-five dash zero five as amended.
Second.
Roll call.
Counselor Joe.
Yes.
Counselor Jerry.
Yes.
Counselor Rick.
Yes.
Counselor Sandy.
Yes.
Counselor Malia.
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted. Well, that's a big packet, you guys. Sorry.
Oh, you got the theme sister.
You're always needed, but thank you. Thank you.
See you Thursday.
Yeah.
Is it this Thursday?
Yes, that's.
Are we, are we calling?
No, next Wednesday.
Next Wednesday.
He's not.
Oh.
You mean RVSS.
Fine. All right, moving right along, right? Am I, am I correct on saying that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. B, resolution twenty-five dash R dash forty, declaring surplus property.
Counsel, before you, and I have pulled up on the screen an amended version of this ordinance as I added some property, uh, to the surplus. But it is required for, uh, municipalities, uh, as items are no longer of use to the city that, um, we have them go through a hearing, that we can have them declared surplus. So resolutions twenty-five dash R dash forty, uh, I will, um, jump to the portion of their form be it resolved, the surplus declaration, uh, and highlighting that I added an eight and a nine to the list of what was published in the packet. So one is a wood stove, two is four amplifier and speakers, uh, three is seven Samsung tablets, four is office furniture, five massage chairs, six miscellaneous seasonal decorations, seven miscellaneous office supplies, uh, eight, a drip torch, nine miscellaneous shop parts. Uh, so these are items that we have realized that there's no use for us at the city. Must have them declared. Then the disposition is we can sell them, they could be donated. Um, but there's no further use to the city for these items.
More questions?
Sure. Why does the city own a massage chair?
Uh, the city had never purchased a massage chair. A former employee, uh, decided to. uh, decided to bring it to the shop and put it in the office next to an electric fireplace. When that employee left, they were asked to get all their property out. They said they no longer wanted it. And because it's been left on our property, I just want to make sure we're following the right steps to have it. It was abandoned to us. Thank you.
Any other questions?
How, are, how is this gonna be, just gonna be posted on our website? With the citizens or is this?
I can tell you the Samsung tablets have no value. My first inclination that I have uh, is to see if any of the items, uh, there are like a couple windows we're taking out of the shop. Uh, those items, uh, I can try to sell on Facebook Marketplace, just, uh, or we can donate them. I mean, it's just kind of one of those things that, uh, generally when I've gotten stuff that there's no use of, we've taken it to thrift store. Um, we've donated to a couple of locations. So um, I have an opportunity to trade the wood stove for a mini split. Uh, which would give heat and air down at the shop. Uh, having a wood stove next to flammable material is not wise. And uh, so anyhow, having, uh, I had a citizen approach me with interest of the wood stove and said I have access to six mini splits and so there's a potential that I can just swap and uh, that would be, then we can have heating and air down at the shop in, in that office space in the back. So um, anyhow, so that's what I was looking at doing there. Um, I had somebody ask if they could buy the drip torch. I can tell you, I don't want the city owning a drip torch. Uh, there's other ways to set fires, but the only time I have in my twenty-five years of government experience seen a drip torch used is when they're setting back burns and wildland fires and there is no purpose for the City of Gold Hill to have that. So anyhow, um, I I mean, generally, uh, like the office furniture and stuff, we're gonna donate it. I mean, one time we had some stuff we set outside with the sign said free. We thought we'd do that with a massage chair. You know, or, and it's like, but getting it out of the city property so we can, I mean, some of the stuff's in the way. We're gonna, um, I don't know if you know, there's an add-on to the back of the shop. In that add-on is a desk that's huge and not supported. It's, it doesn't it doesn't have enough legs to hold it up kind of thing. Uh, but there's also a toilet and a sink right in that same open space next to the fridge.
Plumbed?
Plumbed. They use it. Uh, our current employee let me know that, uh, previous employees that didn't even have a lock on the door, so you would easily go into a space and somebody'd be using the facilities. So they at least added a lock to the door. Uh, I am having them add a wall. And so we're going to have a separate restroom from uh, the other space.
Sounds like you already did.
It's, it's getting there. Uh, we don't have the wall installed yet, but uh, you I'll give you an update on some of the other stuff later, but the part of that is you have to get the massage chair out of the corner, the desk out of the other corner, so we can put up a wall. So you can actually have a private facilities, which we're government. You should at least have a private restroom.
I was just really wondering if you were gonna do an auction or something like that, so, but it sounds like most of the stuff was
To look at the Samsung tablets, they have no value. They were originally for the council years ago to have packets and such, and I mean, I can have them wiped and then just give them, but most everything doesn't have enough value to make it worth doing that. There is an option for me to put things on gov deals and try to get some money. Uh, the other group pays the portion of that. Um, so depending on, as we start sorting through some of the old parts that we have in the shop that aren't used or needed anymore. That's an opportunity that if, as things get declared surplus, that on gov deals, we can say here's an item, does anybody want it? And, uh, but then gov deals gets a percentage of it, the person pays a portion of that and, but they have to we don't have to do anything with it. They have to figure out how to get it. So there's, based on the item, we'll look through our options.
So will the bathroom have he or she on there? Well, I have a question.
No, there will be no signage on the door. It's, there's no signage on the doors here at City Hall. They're just single hole, multi-use.
Just checking. Any other questions? And are we looking for?
I would ask for an, uh, the motion to adopt the resolution twenty-five R forty as amended.
I make a resolution to, or make a motion to adopt a resolution twenty-five R forty as amended.
Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Counselor Joe.
Yes.
Counselor Jerry.
Yes.
Counselor Rick.
Yes.
Counselor Sandy.
Yes.
Counselor Malia.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Okay, so we're moving on to resolution twenty-five dash R dash twenty-one, employee handbook amended.
Correct, forty-one. This is a forty-one. And, you know, in typical fashion, I had to amend this one too. I didn't want it to be left out. Uh, I had reached out to our HR department. Uh, we got a letter recently from the League of Oregon Cities advising recently the Oregon Government Ethics Commission weighed in on an opinion letter about if meals are provided. So say this room was full of a community event and we gave lunch to the community and uh, there might be, you know, enough leftover that staff couldn't get a meal while they're working through lunch kind of thing. Uh, that the opinion is we'd have to tax it and unless it is specifically in the employee handbook or policy that it is part of compensation. Uh, yes, it's got complicated. It's an eighteen-page opinion. So this is purely in response to the Oregon Government Ethics Commission's opinion piece. If you would like to see the full eighteen-page opinion letter, I can email it. I wasn't going to print it. Uh, it's not law, it's an opinion. Uh, but it basically said that for them to accept any beverages or food, that it has to be part of a compensation packet. Uh, the first version of this that I put before you had wording that one city in Oregon had used. I wasn't entirely thrilled with it. Uh, the wording that is before you, uh, in this amended version, and I will bring it up for the screen for the public to see. Oops, sorry, not that one. Oh, it's on my other screen. There, we'll get there. You'd think I know. Here we go. So the twenty, the forty-one. Uh, so the language is adding section M under two, in our employee handbook, we have section two, classification compensation subsection M adding these three portions. Beverages, beverages such as coffee, tea, or hot chocolate provided at City Hall and consumed during the course of the workday is considered part of the employee's official compensation packet. Package. Uh, B snacks. The city makes available snacks available for no cost to the public and employees. These snacks and beverages are for employees' convenience. Considered part of the employee's official compensation package. Meals and snacks associated with meetings or city events. As additional compensation, the city may from time to time provide meals, light snacks, and/or beverages non-alcoholic for staff volunteers and/or the public during training, special events and/or meetings in which businesses conducted over the meal hours, for example, city council meetings, planning commission meetings, and business meetings conducted over the noon hour. Such meals and beverages and snacks are deemed to be de minimis and are excluded from the recipient's taxable income. So this addresses both the taxable income and the compensation for the Ethics Commission. Uh, I will be looking to have something come back for the council also to be covered that this is considered compensation. Uh, I just am trying to make sure I have the right wording for you guys. The first step was staff. Uh, so for instance, I, on my own dime, took the staff to lunch on, for birthday. And that would be deemed something that would have to be taxable or compensation, even though the city didn't even pay for it, but it was city ti- yeah, anyhow. So we're, we're just trying to make sure that we have everything in order. And so it was recommended that we put this in the employee handbook.
I have a question though. Um, what business is it of the state or county? If I want to take somebody here to lunch on my dime?
You cannot benefit from working for the city in any capacity that is not available to anybody else.
Who's benefiting?
A meal.
It's not me, I'm paying.
So the opinion of the Oregon Government Ethics Commission is that when they received that bottled water or that leftover slice of pizza or took them, that, that that is them benefiting from their position in government. And, and so we're just establishing that from time to time. Uh, we might have to work through a work session. We might have a goal setting all day and we need a feed. And I have staff working during that time, so I'm not gonna make them have to bring a sack lunch when we're providing food for the public, that kind of thing. Um, but by just having it declared in this way, we are dotting i's and crossing t's. Um, no offense, I mean, I, we got a snack bowl in the back that has always been available for the public. If somebody came in and needed something, it's like there's nobody we withhold that from. Anybody that walks through the door is welcome to it. But because you're not allowed to benefit from your position, we're just making sure we have a policy that covers it.
This is to cover our backs.
This is to make sure we're in compliance and the accountability of elected officials and employees is either the Department of Justice or the Oregon Government Ethics Commission. So um, anyhow, I thought this language was cleaner than the original version. And so that's why you see resolution twenty-five R forty-one amended in front of you.
I'll make a motion to pass resolution number twenty-five R dash forty-one as amended.
Second.
Counselor Joe.
Yes.
Counselor Jerry.
Yes.
Counselor Rick.
Yes.
Counselor Sandy.
Yes.
Counselor Malia.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. I appreciate your patience.
Send agenda.
Okay, I believe that is uh, the minutes from our last meeting unless there's any um, changes.
I don't see them in the packet.
Are they missing?
Yeah.
Uh, then I would ask that we table this till the next meeting. Forgive me.
Report from councils.
I will. So the big news at the MPO, mid-rope Metropolitan Planning Organization, which is um, basically an ODOT and federal transportation committee. Um, first of all, uh, they're, they're seeing huge, huge cuts coming down the pike. Um, so they're saying to be prepared to see less things like sanding and snow removal in the winter and cleaning up on roadsides and basically they're laying, they, and they're laying off enormous number of people. And then probably in January, if the state doesn't do something to mitigate these loss of funds, they'll be making another big wave of layoffs, um, at ODOT. Um, so the, basically it won't affect projects such as our bridge. Not going to affect current projects that are already funded. But it's basically gonna affect a lot of maintenance and, and just basic operations sadly. If you, if any citizens are interested, um, in being involved with the MRMPO, it consists of three committees. There's a, um, policy committee which is composed of elected officials. Then there's the, uh, uh, technical advisory committee, which is mostly composed of employees of different cities and government who work in transportation. And then there's a citizen advisory committee. And, um, there are openings on the citizen advisory committee and Gold Hill has never had in my memory, representation on the citizen advisory committee. So I'm just saying this for everybody out there in TV land or if you have any interest in being on the citizen advisory committee, get in touch with me and I'll tell you how to do that or probably, um, we could help you do that too. So if you have an interest in transportation, there's an opening on that committee and it would be great to have somebody from Gold Hill on there. Thank you.
Any other? Anything for the good of the order? Or no, excuse me, city manager reports.
It's all good. I, uh, forgive me, I am dropping paper back here. Okay, so first thing on the city manager report is last week I was out. Um, and, uh, the Oregon City County Managers Association held a conference in Bend. Uh, they had a, um, kind of training, uh, the first day uh, on Tuesday. And, uh, then the rest of the conference went Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday morning. Uh, and, uh, I was able to get a scholarship to cover the registration of the conference as well as my lodging. Uh, and then the city covered my mileage and meals, which only had to be dinner because they covered breakfast and lunch every day. Um, but, uh, I'm really glad I went. They gave us some really good trainings the first day on various topics from budget to city manager contracts to, um, just a lot of things. They gave some different tours and I didn't take part in either of the tours. I instead opted to come back and process emails and meet with staff and, um, but I found that I hadn't realized just how small the group is. If you think about uh, there's approximately two hundred and forty-one cities in Oregon and not all of them have a city manager, but most have something in that form, but um, it's not a lot in the whole state. If you think every council has five to seven or eight members times every city, there's a whole lot more elected officials than the city managers. And so it was good to network and hear from other people how they address different situations and things that are coming up and meeting other people that you can reach out to and say, can I get some advice on that? Uh, we have a listserv where we share emails and such. Um, but out of it, I was actually encouraged to, uh, apply for their board as a director position. Uh, yes, I'm still new to being a city manager coming up on twenty months, but I have twenty-five years in local government and uh, well, twenty-three years local government. Couple stints, years at the state don't really count for much, but anyhow, um, there's nobody, uh, the only member from Southern Oregon is going off the board at the end of the year and there's not really little cities represented and such. And so I'm not sure. I'd, I'd like if you guys have feedback on if um, if that's a good or bad thing to let me know, but I was encouraged to apply. I have till next week to bu- put my application in. Um, but last year, as you know, I kind of found myself butting heads with some of the policies there. Um, and what a neat way to turn around and get involved and to be involved more. And so they asked if you are on the board, which positions would you want to be a part of? And I said policies and ethics. Um, so anyhow, um, I, I really am glad I was able to go. I think it's a benefit to us. And it was also really encouraging. The feedback I got from other counselors, or sorry, other managers, when they heard how much as a council in a city we've accomplished in the last nineteen months. They were amazed at how much has gotten done. And to get that feedback from colleagues that are professional and have been doing it for a while was encouraging. And I just, it made me all the more appreciative of you as a council and let me work with you guys. So thank you. Um, so I definitely wanted to share that with you guys, um, on a
Are you moving on to a different topic? Can I ask questions?
Please, go ahead.
So if you are on the board, um, how often does the board meet?
It meets five times a year. Two of them were at conferences. I'd probably be at already. The OCCMA conference and the LOC ball conference. Uh, the potential for the spring conference, they do another one. That's a rotating one. Um, and I asked and they said they offer Zoom. And so if I can take part remotely, as many as I can, I will. Um, so they meet five times a year.
That would be my concerns.
Yeah, no, I'm not looking to travel more.
And as long as it isn't too terribly time consuming.
Yeah, I hope not. Yeah. No, the, the idea would be not to, but at the same time, this always comes first.
Is that a volunteer position? Any other questions?
So I have other items for the city manager report I need to report on. Uh, one of them is, um, in front of you, you will see, I left some papers on your desk. I'm just gonna go through some of them with you guys. Um, but uh, the one that I want to go over right now is the letter from Oregon that says uh, the Small City Allotment Program results. So uh, earlier I contracted with our engineer to come up with a design for road repair and a paving project that was estimated at just cents below two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And so I put in for a grant for the Small City Allotment. And we got notified this week that we didn't get it. Um, and it's interesting since last year we put a project in and didn't get it. So I started looking back through our documentation and I found that our last grant award that we received was in twenty twenty one. Um, or twenty twenty two, our city manager within a day or two of no longer working here uh, sent a letter to ODOT saying we're not able to fulfill this grant and and give the money back. And um, looking at the dates, it's uh, it's literally in the last week or two that that city manager was working here. Um, and so I'm not sure the timing of all that, but when I came across that letter this week, what I did give you is uh, in the letter to us, they said that projects are graded and prioritized as they best meet the program criteria. Funds must be used on streets that are inadequate for the capacity they serve or in a condition detrimental to safety. The road that I requested to be addressed was Fourth Avenue between Gustav and Dardanelle. You have the traffic that comes right off of Highway two thirty four corner there. You see school buses going through there. It's uh, kind of corroding off the edge there as it goes into that dirt parking lot. Um, and so if they did full gutters and sidewalks on both sides of the road, we would have been able to do Gustav to Fredenberg. I said, no, thank you. We needed to address the whole extent of the street. So it would have been uh, addressing the sidewalks and curbs and intake uh, for the stormwater and repaving the road, but just on the north side of the road where the houses are, not the blank side where everybody's parking. Why put curb and gutter there when it's being used effectively right now? Uh, but anyhow, we're in a region, I gave you guys the list of the uh, how the award recipients were distributed between the regions. And in Region Three where we are, there was nine hundred and thirty five thousand dollars issued to um, Kuz and Douglas Counties. And uh, the rest that we are in a uh, with Curry, Kuz, Douglas, Josephine and Jackson County region. Uh, so anyhow, uh, and then I asked a question of ODOT to see how we could have a better response since two years in a row we were rejected. I am now wondering if us returning the funds in twenty twenty two is also a black eye, and I believe it is. Uh, and um, but the other piece is they sent me a a email back on my inquiry and uh, we're just going to keep applying at this point. Um, but I I was pretty shocked to find that letter um, from twenty twenty.
That never came before city council.
It did.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure that when you return money like that, even like where I work at, we try not to, because if you do, you usually get um, barred for three years to five years for getting any recipient from that grant or even applying for it.
Hmm.
So that's the SCA grant, which stands for Small City Allotment. Um, it used to be that it um, at least by your third year, you'd get it, but I think we're looking at a little bit more and um, but we've already paid for the engineering of it. We already have the design. We'll just keep applying and until we can get that. I still think it's a a street that needs to be dealt with. Um, I have a bad report to provide that was really frustrating this week and I am trying to investigate and find out more. So in twenty twenty two, the best that I've been able to determine as at the time, the city did payroll in-house. And our finance software vision has a payroll module. And in it, you you put in the payroll and it tells you how much you pay to IRS, how much you pay to Department of Revenue, how much you pay to the insurance and all those PERS and all that. It tells you the breakdown and then you issue the vendor checks. And you do payroll and there's all this reporting that goes on it. When I do payroll on Friday, the payroll taxes are due the following Wednesday and we do payroll every other week. And the PERS report is due the Friday after payroll. So there's things you have to do to every single week you're doing stuff payroll related. And when there was a turnover of staff in September of twenty twenty two, the new folks came in. It took some time for people to get access to things. Uh, and I'm not sure the timing of how they decided or when they decided, but they opted, they realized that the taxes had not been being paid. They withheld the taxes, the payroll taxes from paid. But they didn't pay the IRS and they didn't pay Oregon Department of Revenue amongst other bills they weren't paying at the time. So they contracted with a third party at the time out of Medforcall Personnel Services that got acquired by a bigger company, I solved. And then I came on board a year later and uh, payroll's going along. You know the issues we had with my payroll since my first couple of paychecks were wrong and got to bring that before the council. That's always exciting. Uh, sorry sarcasm. And uh, so then getting ready for the trying to get those stuff finished for the audit, the twenty two, twenty three year audit. And and one of the things that was holding it up was since they switched to the third party, staff had not entered payroll into the finance software, so it wasn't accounted for in the software. So eighteen months of payroll had to be determined and entered in. I opted to figure out what we could do to go back to the in-house software that we had because it also had all the history in it. And and so as of January of this year, payroll was brought back in house. And I run payroll and we had to get signed up for IRS so that we can pay our taxes online uh, and submit the reports and with Oregon Department of Rev. And we I log in after every payroll and we pay those and I submit the reports for PERS. But when we first got in there, it showed we owed all this money and what it turned out is all those vendor checks from twenty twenty two were still sitting there. And had we just gone in and started going through pay session by pay session, all the documentation was there. They just instead they paid a third party to rerun payroll and pay all of it. But that was all done. So if you look at our payroll from March of twenty twenty three, there's a big payroll where they paid a couple of months and they were supposed to pay all the taxes. So I don't remember when exactly last year I get a notification that we owe penalties and fees and taxes from fourth quarter two thousand nineteen. And I I decided to call our congressman's office and say, look, I've been here this long now. Why are we just getting a notice from five years ago? Had we received this notice sooner, we would have incurred less penalties and fees and could have had it paid sooner. Why five years later? So as they start looking at it, they call back and say, well, they found three other quarters you owe for in twenty twenty and twenty twenty one. And so I ended up calling the IRS because each day you incur more interest. And I called them and while I'm on the phone, what's the exact amount I owe? And I submitted the payments. And it was some thirteen thousand dollars for those four quarters that we had to pay. And on the phone and with our congressman's office, I verified there was no other back pay and taxes we had. One of the things that looks like happened in one of the years is we owed to the IRS that paid to Oregon Department of Revenue because this one random quarter, we had this four thousand dollar credit and Oregon Department of Revenue. And unless we ask for it to be applied to a different term, so with Oregon Department of Revenue, there was also issues with some uh, fees and some outstanding debt for unpaid payroll taxes. And I had to send them a letter saying, please take the credit from this payroll period and apply it to these other ones that have owing and then give us a refund for the rest. So that's now happened and we're current on paying everything. Until the week before last, I get a letter from the IRS saying we owe nineteen thousand dollars for first quarter twenty twenty two. Uh, so I called the IRS trying to understand why. Uh, after I was on the phone with them and they said we were current, how come all of a sudden there's another pops up? Because this was in the timeframe of what I solved or Personnel Services at the time. I had reports. So as I was getting stuff, as I'm switching companies to come back in house, I'm downloading all the reports of all the payroll taxes and all the reporting that was done. And the IRS nine forty one forms and nine forty one Bs, which are where you pay the taxes and how much and the breakdown between the types of taxes that are quoted the reports that are due. I have all the file copies that they sent, including that first quarter. They're claiming the report was only received in April of twenty twenty five. So the documentation says April twenty twenty three. So it was for first quarter twenty twenty two. Through that third party, it was paid in April twenty twenty three. And all four were paid at the same time. They all have the same date. All four quarters of twenty twenty two were paid in April of twenty twenty three. And so I've submitted another inquiry. What I did is I paid it that day. I don't want us incurring any more interest, but now I'm fighting it. Uh, and my my point is it was reported in twenty twenty three. And they're claiming they only got it in twenty twenty five and that um, even anyhow, that's I I went back to the congressman's office and I have outlined the documentation and the timeframes. And again, why two years later and how much of the interest in the fees would have been done had this not been done then when we had a third party that brought us to current? Uh, so I, like I said, good or bad, I'm going to tell you guys what's going on and I um, to stop the bleeding, I paid it. But it's interesting to me that the other three quarters weren't dealt with. And so I'm trying to find all that out. And it's all been sent to the uh, the IRS expert in Congressman Benson's office and I'm awaiting to hear back from them. Um, so yeah, it was upsetting, especially when I thought I'd got us all caught up and then you randomly get a letter saying, oh, and but. Um, I think it's their mistake, but I don't I how do you fight the IRS? And so that's why I have Congressman Benson's helping. So um, I'm going to go back to more positive work uh, as part of my, yes, sir.
So what ti- how much timeframe is in between the two payments? That's thirty two thousand dollars.
For, yeah, so well, it was last week that we paid the nineteen thousand and the thirteen thousand was several months ago. I mean, sometime sometime since January. I don't remember exactly which month it was. It was on one of the financial reports I gave you guys actually, because I remember saying that's old IRS payments that we had to pay, but uh, you know, they said on the phone and to the congressman's office, these were the only four outstanding. But they're claiming they didn't even process it until June, that they only got it in April, which makes no sense because the data on it says twenty three and they were all submitted the same and they're only dealing with one. So I'm hoping to see that we can get something resolved with that. Uh, I am also a little nervous of what's going on with the other three quarters that year. Um, what I can tell you is we are current in everything we're reporting. Uh, we've also gotten our finance software to be able to upload, but Oregon uh, Form one thirty two and OQ uh, OQ and Form one thirty two to Department of Revenue and the IRS nine forty ones uh, that it just automatically as a report, we can download and send in. So it's kind of we've been a part of helping them beta test that and um, because I don't want us facing this, right? Uh, but anyhow, um, yeah. Uh, there's just no way to even describe it. It's sickening. I I was angry and I was sick to my stomach.
It is is very frustrating. I've been doing payroll since twenty twenty and uh, that's what the the IRS has been doing. That's the whole COVID thing got them off off filter. And so if you have all our documentation in order, as you said, and we can prove all those things, then it'll get resolved in the end, but I can I understand your frustration because I've been going through it for the last five years.
Well, and I also reached out to ISolved and they um, and I reached out to Adam, who was the city manager at the time, just to it's like, I want to make sure I have the right information. So anyhow, um, I'm hoping that we have it, but I also felt that had I just waited and fought it, it was going to go up. And I didn't want to do that. So um, yeah, I okay, two other issues, our audits. Uh, met with a new auditor. I'm working on an RFP to go out to hire a new auditor for the twenty four, twenty five year. Uh, last week, some of you, not all of you, because they used a two-year-old council list, half of which the people are not here anymore. Uh, but the auditors reached out to council to say, hey, fill out this survey for us for the twenty four, twenty five audit year of which I replied and I said, do not contact my council regarding the twenty four, twenty five year. We are not in contract for that year. Um, and uh, we've been putting pressure on when is the twenty two, twenty three audit going to be done? We're told this week we're going to get that report of which then they're also going to give us some corrections. We'll get some things turned around right away for the twenty three, twenty four to be finalized and hoping that both of those will be finalized soon. Uh, our financial consultant and Maori and I met with a separate auditor who's got several Oregon cities of which I respect their managers and their processes. Um, and uh, it looks like because it's usually a multi-year contract, it'd have to go to RFP. But so I'm drafting that now. I've gotten some samples from some other cities. See, you go to conference, you get other people's info and you get help. Uh, so I'm trying to amend some RFPs to put out some requests to see if we can get a new auditor. We'll get the twenty two, twenty three and the twenty three, twenty four finished with our current auditor and then hopefully be able to go to a new one. Um, and I I was encouraged by the conversation I had with that one at least. Um, that will save some time and effort, do more stuff online versus paying for onsite visits uh, necessarily that uh, if we can upload documentation to them in that capacity, it'll save us cost and time and um, everything I do is electronic anyhow, um, so that should work. So we will be looking for that, but more importantly, uh, let's see if our auditors who promised something by the end of this week will actually have it. Uh, and finally, our staff. A couple of them are firefighters, so uh, have been in and out. It's our seasonal staff. Um, not everybody's here every day, uh, but when they're here, they're giving their all. Um, you know, there's this wood shack down in the park that's kind of rotting and weird and it's down by the picnic things. Well, turns out it's vault toilets. And who knew? They just kind of sealed them up and we're going to let them be and uh, Rick helped me get them open and uh, cleaned them out. And uh, the staff have been rebuilding them and they're in the process of painting them, but they got fresh screens and uh, they replaced their rod and new vents and different stuff. So those will be, you know, open and goo- good to go. Uh, the other septic and vault toilets got cleaned out today and we got good stuff back in them already. So um, but there's just all this work getting done. You will notice at the sports park, the gate is being installed. Uh, the starting next week, the fence at City Park will be installed. And uh, the um, we're putting a person door in the side of the shop, so we don't have to have those big rolling doors open every time you go in and out. And uh, so that's in process right now. Uh, we are going to add a wall in the office bathroom, so the bathroom can be separate from the office down at the shop. And um, then uh, let's see, meeting with Energy Trust of Oregon, uh, setting those meetings up to try to see if we can add some efficiencies potentially solar for some battery power storage and uh, for um, our different sites to see if we can offset anything. Um, I had met with them last year in February about insulation for this building and they said we qualified for their program for that. But uh, it I I knew we were going to be doing the electronics and the sound and we were going to be running wires in the attic. So I waited, but now that all the wires are run that we needed to run, I'm circling back to see about getting insulation in here done. Uh, I also um, let's let's see.
Both of them?
Yes, ma'am.
How would that work? I mean, where does the insulation go? I mean, this is, these are just single walled brick here.
Yeah, uh, well, the, they measure the thickness of your insulation up in the attic. And ours is compressed enough that it meets the standard that we qualify for more. And I believe they just blow in more.
In the attic, not the walls here.
It's just the attic. It's just the attic insulation. And uh, they give like a reimbursement of, I don't remember the amount per square footage, but they thought we could get the project done in the amount they give. And so there shouldn't be a cost to the city. Um,
On the doors where that leaks, can we, can they fix that? Where did that get?
That's us. That's it. Uh, it's weather stripping.
So the weather stripping around the windows, uh, Fred and I went around and we put it back. Uh, I haven't contacted anybody yet about if we replace it. Um, but it has, I mean, at least we've shoved it back everywhere we could. And you know, there's, we're going to have to at some point figure out what to do with, with the space when OSP moves out. We've applied for a grant uh, from the Oregon Emergency Operations about getting a generator as backup potentially with the bridge shutting and everything else that this could be an emergency operations center on the other side so that uh, any fire or um, medical or law enforcement can stage and there's space for that. So, um, Rob and I are looking at trying to reorganize all our files. These are full. We have a storeroom back in State Police. We have the room next to the kitchen. And it just appears that everything's just kind of haphazardly in different boxes and we're going to try to just go through and put like things together. Uh, so we are uh, making sure that any planning stuff are together. We're also trying to see a way of all the plans and stuff that are just thrown in the back room that we actually sort them and get them. I found a map from nineteen twenty five of our water system. Yeah, it's kind of interesting. Yeah. So anyhow, um, I feel like there's something else that I was going to tell you about a project we're working on. Um, I don't know. I just, if you look at the parks, if you look at the work that they're doing, uh, I just want to give a shout out to Rick. Oh, the other project was Shavner. Uh, it, it got paved yesterday.
Stucked it out on the way.
And uh, yeah, we took the cones down today so that we get, we get money from the state from gas tax. That money just went towards that project. Uh, so that was twenty four thousand five hundred dollars. We got the invoice today. Uh, and they did a great job. Um, and uh, but I want to give a shout out to Rick. He's been helping us uh, down at Beach Park. He put in a fire break down there. Um, he located some water, uh, the, the, the lids to where the water main valves are. So they were addressed with the, uh, the paving and fixed some stuff down at the shop for us. So I appreciate all that help. Uh, but there's just a lot going on. I, if you look down at the park, the weeds are green and that's.
They're getting mowed too.
They are, they are. So we will be working at the, the weeding and feeding. So, um, under good of the order, I got some other stuff for y'all too, but that as far as.
Go back one step here. Um, so you said the gate, the sports park getting put in. Do fire department have access to that gate?
Yeah, we'll have a knock code at the, for night access for fire and for sheriff.
Just want to make sure.
Yep. I also called the company today and said, um, you're installing the keypads on the passenger side of the car. Can you install them on the other side, please? Owner of the company said they'd get that fixed. Uh, the sheds, we're also looking at doing another, um, we're going to get the footings placed for the uh, canopies that we were given and uh, um, the footings have been placed by the one over by the Little League. We had some volunteers come out and help us unload it. Uh, but we probably are going to need like ten people to show up just to lift it. So we put the legs back underneath it and then place it on those footings. Um, yeah, there's, there's more there, but we're, we'll get those placed and excited about that. Um, I'm in the process of also trying to get replacement doors for the water treatment plant. Uh, so we're working on getting some quotes for those. They are in need of that. Um, but also when Energy Trust comes out, we're looking at the heating and the air and the efficiency in the treatment plan as well. See if, if there's any help we can get there. Okay, so that's the report portion and Mayor, when you're ready for the other one, I can go on there. Okay, um, I did include in the back of the packet um, a letter that I received from So Ready, basically their chair or their president's, you know, encouraging ongoing partnership. And on the back page is the invoice we got last week for the membership. Um, at various times, there's been questions of do we stay apart? Do we not? I just figure I'm going to take it to you as a council. Uh, So Ready is the Southern Oregon Regional Economic Development. It's a partnership. I think that was initially started between Grants Pass, Medford, Josephine County, Jackson County. Uh, most of the cities and a lot of businesses in the region are a part of it. They focus on trying to help businesses uh, with business expansion and retention. They do micro loans uh, for different starting businesses. And they try to recruit traded sector where outside businesses would come to Southern Oregon and produce their product here and sell it elsewhere. So outside money would be coming into Southern Oregon to boost the economy. Uh, through feedback from elected officials in other cities, though, there's been pushback that not everybody can just be traded sector. And their executive director is no longer there. She, and, and I don't know what their status is on recruiting a new one. But I have heard they are trying to focus on how they can be a better help in the region. And um, but it's also even all the reason why I needed to bring a five hundred dollar expense to you as the council and say, do you want to continue to be a member of So Ready? Um, I will tell you, my personal opinion is they may not be doing much for the businesses of Gold Hill. But Gold Hill is primarily a bedroom community that they would, the impact to our citizens may be that they're impacting a business in a bigger area that our people might work at. Uh, so, and then the tourism component and um, of us trying to do some improvements down on the park as regional tourism comes here, as they partner with pointing to, hey, have you been to Gold Hill? Have you gone and checked out the this and that, you know, that kind of thing. So there is some benefit, but I don't see them necessarily. One impact could be if Swedes expands, they could potentially be eligible for something. Uh, they would be that business that kind of um, qualifies, but this is a council decision. And so I just wanted to make sure that I brought it before you guys. Um, because there has been some change in leadership and, and questions from the council in the last year.
What?
I also have some input on that. Um, so already because it's a kind of a big topic with the Harvey Cog meetings that I go to. And also with the mayor's meetings that I attend. Um, a lot of towns. And Lily was right when she said that um, they do being, bring big business into the valley. It might not be in your town, but maybe White City, they start a plant or help start a plant there and give out loans or direct the person to get that loan, you know, they, they show them the right ways to go or where to go. Um, there's, there's a lot of pluses and there's also a lot of negatives. In Gold Hill, personally, they don't help. Just to be honest, they, there's nothing here that they help for.
That was going to be my question.
But they help us with. Nothing.
But if they're helping the region, that there's trickle down. I mean, there is.
Well, that's, that's the point. There might be people here that work out.
Yeah, exactly.
At a plant that they, they sponsored.
Right. Yeah, yeah. Anything that helps, you know, build business and industry in the county is going to benefit us.
Well, and I, you know, in talking with Swede, they choose to be in Gold Hill because they draw from both directions and that central location. And that's a huge blessing to us in that capacity. Uh, but other, I mean, but many in our community work in those areas that in the rivers. And so there's a regional benefit there, but um, for the cost, I don't think our portion is compared to what some of the others pay. Ours is more reasonably, but.
I wondered how they came up with that figure.
I think it's based on the population. Yeah.
It's not population.
That's different. They've changed that in the last few years, well, in the last couple of decades.
So ready?
I used to work there.
Oh, okay.
I didn't know that. Joe, you had a question? Okay. I don't know.
His question was, do they do?
Well, I don't think that's.
Right, but I.
Exactly. Okay. I, I, I'm in favor of paying the dues.
Yeah.
And, and I'm, I'm just hoping it's only five hundred bucks. We're, we're hemorrhaging money. Is it? We've been increasing fees and all kinds of things. Do, are we actually using their services? Are you actually going to get us five hundred dollars worth of something? And I don't see that.
Well, this is the council's call. So, and that's what Lily's asking. Um, I'm just letting you know that uh, regionally, county-wise, they, they do help out the communities. Locally, no, we, we don't benefit from that unless we have people living near that work in some of the companies that they.
No, and I'm just off the, in my head, what I'm thinking is there are larger entities out there that are supporting them. But our five hundred bucks, it's, it just, if we were to not do it, it's not going to hurt nothing. You know, it'd save us, it's five hundred bucks.
And what would we lose if we don't pay it?
Nothing.
We could always, we could always opt in again if we were to choose not to be there. We could always opt in a later date too, but I'd like to join in. Chamber of thought.
Yes, exactly.
We need to vote.
I, I'm happy with a thumbs up, thumbs down from you guys. I, whatever you want. I, I, I just want to make sure that I'm not just automatically doing something without running it by you guys.
I, I'd say we drop it, but now my, my vote's no.
No.
Yeah, I'm okay either way.
It's three to two.
Okay. All right. So another thing that's in front of you is from Pacific Power or Pacific Core. They are hosting an open house press conference. And it's on Wednesday, August sixth from ten AM to noon, uh, but it requires a registration. So I put it in front of all y'all in case any of you wanted to go and hear kind of what they're doing and what they're about. Um, also in front of you for the good of the order is an updated phone list, contact list.
Thank you.
I asked that you not share it beyond you guys, but yes. Uh, and uh, just as a point of um, we have two vacancies on our Parks Committee, one on our Planning Commission and one on our Budget Committee. Uh, so just wanted to point those vacancies out.
We have an opening on the Planning Commission?
Yes.
Oh.
Well, I guess we do. Two step down.
And we've had it open for a while since Steve. Yeah, it's, we've only been going with four for quite some time. Uh, so, um.
Well, that's right. Steve and Wendy. Well, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, so um, the other topic that I had on there was the League of Oregon Cities Fall Conference. And uh, it is time for registration and our council all received scholarships for lodging. Um, and so what we're looking at is the city would pay for registration for the council members to attend. Uh, but I will tell you that as you go to log in, there's questions I can't answer for you. I would almost need to sit down with you and say, okay, which ones do you want to register for? Uh, so a couple of things, there's an extra session for the mayor. There's an extra session for manager. There's an extra session for counselors that have cost. Uh, there's a awards dinner night that there's an extra cost to, and there's some tours in the area that they have some extra costs to. So really, I, I went to register even myself and I'm like, I need to back out of this because there's been some other trainings and such that I just like, okay, I got us all registered and I can register all of you guys, but dietary restrictions and uh, preferences of different things. I don't want to make that call, but I also am concerned about how much the cost would be of all the things that are extra. And um, but I also know there's also benefit in some of those sessions, like the council ones and stuff. So I wanted to make sure to bring that up to you guys and um, kind of see what you want us to do.
Is that list of costs in that email?
No.
It was actually part of the um, proposed agenda that came with the packet that I got in the.
Oh, so yes, if you had a proposed agenda in that email that you got. Um, all right. So if you applied for a scholarship and you got notified of the scholarship, then you probably got an email with that proposed agenda. Uh, the exception is I may have merged Joe and Sandy. Because since the scholarship was for lodging, I suggested we only needed one for you two. And, um,
Could he go through my email and register separately?
So you each have your own login to League of Oregon Cities that you can register in uh, yourselves for. Um, I believe it's, um, you might have to do your for, forget your password, but it's your city email is your, your login. And so you can individually do it, or if you do want to come in and just make some time with me one-on-one, I can go through the registration with each of you individually and just put it in and I can register you as well. So uh, anyhow, I just thought I would bring that topic up. Um, they, they, at my request, did it differently than just a full scholarship for registration and everything for just a couple of us. I said, will you just cover the lodging so my whole council can go and I don't have to pick and choose who's, who gets to go and who doesn't. And um, it's kind of neat. We all get to go. So that's pretty cool. Um, and I think we'll benefit from it and we'll be able to attend more different things to do it, but I don't want to pick for you. And uh, so we'll have to do that. So I'm willing to set up time. I have, I have time this week and next week is pretty open. Uh, for me to have time to sit with you guys individually and, and get you registered if you like. Um, just a reminder, there is a training on Friday, the twenty sixth of September. Correct? Uh, that's the one that we've all registered for and paid extra to go. No, it's uh, this was the municipalities LOC training that's from eight AM to noon. Just a reminder for your calendars. Friday, September twenty sixth. And then there is the small cities one in September, but I don't recall that date. Uh, and I just want to one more time, RVSS Pipeline Informational Meeting here, July thirtieth, six PM.
Yes.
And our council meeting on August fifth has a presentation on the SEC study, has a presentation from the library and a couple of other things coming. So anyhow, that's what I have for you guys tonight under good of the order.
Can you go back to September twenty sixth?
Yes.
That's, you tell me that again. What, that's, I don't have it on my calendar, so.
The municipal fundamentals training, yes.
Registered.
We're all registered and the twenty emails I sent you guys, I'm bombarded. Uh, getting feedback, I got emails back saying, yes, yes. And I, uh,
Put it on my calendar. Is it all day?
It is not all day. It's in the morning. Um, it looks like it's, it's either eight thirty to twelve thirty or eight to twelve thirty. I'm trying to look at my, but and we will have some travel time to get over to Medford to go. It is at the police headquarters in Medford on Ivy Street.
That's, well, I'd work that. I seen that the other day.
Um, yeah, anyhow, that's all I have for you guys unless you have questions.
Was that for the good of the order?
Yes, sir.
Anybody else? No? Okay. Adjustments?
Adjustment?
You're right.
I'm looking at email.
Take your glasses.